Yeah. I'll see if Maureen or Brian want to say something.
Okay, we're broadcasting.
We are? Are we in?
Yes, we're live.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. I just want to thank the technology team for making this happen. Sounds very good. It's not easy sometimes. But we are going to open the meeting then with the pledge allegiance and after the pledge allegiance, we'll do a roll call. Okay? So stand for the pledge allegiance. Aye.
Pledge allegiance.
Aye.
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 United States of America.
And to the mother of our children.
And to the children.
And to our children.
Justice for all. Okay. We'll get that rid of them someday. Okay. Okay, tonight we are here to... Oh, we're gonna do a roll call first. Roll call.
Ms. Biancaria. Mrs. Clancy.
Here.
Mr. Foley.
Here.
Ms. McCullough.
Here.
Mr. Bonfido.
Here.
Ms. Novick.
Here.
And Mayor Petty.
All right, here. I know, does Diana respond? I'm sorry.
Oh. I was trying to call.
Oh, there she is. I got you. I see her.
Oh, good.
I'm on now. Thank you.
Yep.
Everything went down and now it's back up. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, so the purpose of today's meeting is to consider approval of the 2021 educational plan for Worcester Public Schools. First, I just want to say thank you to the superintendent and her team. I want to say thank to Dr. Mary Mee Montague, Mary Moss, and Brian Allen for all working together and doing a great job in the technology department also and all the work that was put into this. And I know it hasn't been an easy task. I think probably administration has changed the plan several times over the last month or so, but with input. You know, after listening to the public, after listening to our teachers, not parents, and after reviewing additional ventilation information from principals and conducting site visits, there were several classrooms and common areas in several schools that were taken offline. Although an abundance of caution in accordance with the guidance was decided that the upgrades of the ventilation systems should be conducted this fall in all schools in the district. When the upgrades are complete, the district will begin to transition students in Group C to in-person learning after quarter one. That's really the only change to the plan. It'll be after quarter one. Additionally, the COVID-19 index was changed from green to yellow this week due to the increase in COVID-19 cases in Worcester. For quarter one also, Worcester Public School staff will be allowed to decide if they want to teach remotely, remote learning in their classrooms, or teach from their homes. So we're gonna give that choice to the Worcester Public School staff for the first quarter unless things change for the better. Anyways, at the beginning of this, they can teach from their classroom or they can teach from their home. So I just want to make that clear. And I've talked to superintendent too, and I'm gonna ask superintendent to put mechanisms in place to monitor the education of our children and students. We should have a discussion, I think, every school committee meeting on the first Thursday of the month, beginning in October. I think we're all in this together. We all have to be accountable for the success of our students. We need to work together. The school committee needs to be accountable, the superintendent administration, the principals and the teachers, the parents in the community. By working together with them and also with Roger Nudja and EAW, I know we can be very successful. And believe me, too, I understand some of the pressures on that daycare, how this is putting on the families and on the teachers and our parents. And I don't have the answers now, but some that we're trying to discuss. We know there's daycare spaces that were shot in those spaces. But we hear you. No, we've learned a lot listening to the parents and the teachers over the last couple of weeks. There were late nights. I don't want to do midnight anymore, but there were late nights. And, but it was worth it, you know? It was worth it. And that's why I've been talking to superintendent. I think the idea is we can solve this out. Maybe the Monday before the first Thursday, we do a school committee meeting, maybe for parents, so we can listen to them directly, making sure that they can, education need that their students be met. I know the superintendent is gonna be meeting with the Spanish community once a month. She was very successful this past, this past weekend. I think she told me that she had around 9,000 people on the call, so, through Facebook. So I think that's something we should explore and keep on doing that. Because I'm very worried about, no, very concerned, I guess. I know we have a great staff, great teachers, and they're gonna get the job done, but we all, we just gotta monitor this. I don't want to lose kids and find out in December we didn't do it right. And I know, I know everybody's heart's in the right place. We're gonna work hard to get there, but we need to be accountable, put measures in place that we all know that we're succeeding. Concerned with the special needs kids, concerned with the elk students, concerned with all the students. So, you know, we've lost, you know, three months ago in the last year, some of education, I guess it went pretty well, and I think it's gonna go pretty well in the fall, too. So, again, I know superintendent, if you want to say a few words, or Brian Allen, on the opening of the schools.
Sure. I'll have Mr. Allen start, and then I'll follow.
Okay. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a very quick update, but it aligns with the comments you just made. I think the Worcester Public Schools is really prioritizing HVAC upgrades as part of the school reopening plan. And as part of a more detailed conversation in presentation last week, the three criteria that we're following is increasing outside air, improving ventilation, and then using supplemental filtration where possible. And so, earlier this week, we had an opportunity to meet with the city manager, his team, the mayor and the superintendent. And we've concluded on what that final recommendation is going to be in terms of the upgrades. And so, I just wanted to kind of close that loop in terms of what our presentation was last week and where we stand today. So, the district with the city intends to use the needlepoint bipolar ionization in all schools. Those that have mechanical systems as well as portable units in our non-mechanical buildings as well, classrooms and other spaces. So, that work will require to be done between now and the end of December. So again, that has led to a part of the recommendation on the school reopening plan, that timeframe, to some extent, will prioritize buildings that will allow Group C students hopefully to re-enter schools at the end of the first quarter. But we'll make a, as it stands right now, it's a $15 million investment in our HVAC upgrades as a result of the installation of this ionization equipment. So we'll continue to use, look at our federal stimulus money and work with the city to find funding to cover the costs, to ensure that these upgrades get made. So appreciate the support from the mayor and the city manager in helping come to this conclusion and finding financial resources with us as partners in that to make these upgrades over the next several months. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And thank you, Mr. Allen. And before I forget, maybe Mr. Foley can send this report to finance and they can have a combination hearing with the subcommittee of the city council and have a discussion on the investment when I put this... Jack, is that fine with you?
Yep, it's fine with me, Mr. Mayor. I'll just note also for a minute that part of the concern also that we'll have to talk about our subcommittee is the $15 million cost that Mr. Allen mentioned, but also the projected $16 million shortfall on the revenue business. So, those two together, it's gonna really play into what happens this year as well.
Maybe we can do that over the next couple of weeks to have that meeting.
Yep, we will do that. Dr. Freo, thank you.
Okay. And Madam Superintendent?
Yes, first, I really want to thank the school committee for really being partners with this all along the process. We've been able to meet in small groups with the school committee and go through the plan and think exactly like what is the best plan for all our students in the Worcester Public Schools. So the plan, I really feel, is a very strong plan. The difference from what we presented last Thursday, again, is that Group C will not start school on September 15th on in-person learning. They, all other students, will start school on September 15th with 100% remote learning. That will be provided to all students through quarter one, and then we'll assess what the work has been done with the ventilation in our systems, and we'll be giving an update to parents continually this quarter one. Not only looking at the progress that's happening in our buildings, but also the progress that's happening with all of our students. So, I just want to explain again what that model is. Students will engage in synchronous learning four days a week in all content subjects, collectives, enrichment. Small group synchronous learning from support teachers will also be provided. And then asynchronous learning one day each week, which will be Friday, but there'll also be check-ins with teachers. Our hope is that beginning quarter two, that we will be able to transition our Group C students in, and then also after that, that we'll be able to also do hybrid learning. So the hybrid learning model, again, is that one day per week in-person learning, which will either be a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. Synchronous learning, three days a week in all four content subject collectives and enrichments. And small group synchronous remote learning, again, from support teachers according to their needs, and again on that Friday, asynchronous learning. I also want to say that the new school year can begin successfully only if everyone involved commits to working together for the benefit of all our students. We all have to move forward with a sense of purpose, and we have to provide the best education for all our students. And I'm looking forward to taking on that challenge as I know all the staff in the Worcester Public School.
Oh, is that Maureen?
Yes, thank you.
No, thank you, and great job, by the way, again, I want to say that. And we, what I plan on, before I turn over to the school committee for questions and comments, I just want to say to the public, I think my heart, we're making the right decision here tonight.
Yeah.
We worked hard to get there. We worked over three months to make this decision. And I think it's the right decision, what you read, what you happen in those school districts across the country. We're not gonna put our children and our teachers in jeopardy. So, if the time is right, we have, because if I could do it, I'd have every student back in the buildings tomorrow. But it's not possible right now. With that, it's like any school committee members, Mr. Bonfido, if anybody wants anything to contribute, but I'll do after that. We'll open up for about an hour to the public, then we'll take the vote. Okay? John, you're on mute. John, you're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as everyone else on the school committee, certainly would like to thank administration for the time and effort to a most comprehensive plan. They did a great job of getting it out, talking about it, and making sure that everyone was on the same page. I know that nutrition will be an area to watch, and we need, so we need to remind parents about where their breakfast would be coming from as well as their lunch. So, there are many things that we're gonna be doing as we go along. And, and again, students, parents, you know, they certainly are going to need support. And it's an area to emphasize with our principals and staff. Monthly updates certainly need to take place so that no one gets lost along the way. Another important aspect of the plan is where it says, I was on page 42 of the last time I looked, was principals' will and teachers' will. And again, ongoing evaluations need to take place with emphasis on strengths in areas that will need more, more help as we go on. But I think we're off to the right, on the right start, and I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, it was a hard choice, but it was the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Did you see Jack? Mr. Foley? Who else? Anybody else after Mr. Foley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick comments. One is that I, I will acknowledge the tremendous work that this takes. Those of you who know, I've been in the middle of this at Clark as well, and the extent of areas you have to cover and changing information on a day-to-day basis, trying to get your arms around really what the science is, which is changing, and what the physical changes are. I respect the work, and you can see it reflected in the information that we've gotten over the past two months. So I, I just really acknowledge the tremendous work of the entire staff at really putting this together. I also want to say, I think the level of public engagement was tremendous. I agree. A couple of those midnights are pretty tiring here and there, Mr. Mayor, but I, I think that we had an awful lot of people on the calls. I was really glad to hear about the 9,000-person Facebook event with the Spanish parents. And I, I think people had a chance to really voice the concerns, express their issues and thoughts on this whole matter, and really was a good process. I think we came out of the right place. There are no right answers here. And, you know, no matter which direction we go, people are gonna be put in uncomfortable positions. But I think we did the right thing in trying to protect our students, protect our staff, but also protect our families. And I, I do think that the state guidance was far too casual about the impact upon children. And, you know, we know now that children can get sick from this virus. We don't know enough about the long-term health impacts of the, of having the virus, whether you're a child or whether you're an adult. And I, I think that, given all the concerns right now, I would much rather be in a position of going remote learning, repairing our buildings properly, and Mr. Allen mentioned the HVAC work that's there. We know that's a challenge for us, and the next several months, we can reconcile some of those issues there. I guess, ma'am, only two questions I have, and to the superintendent and the staff. First is the issues of technology. And can you speak a little bit about the distribution of Chromebooks, the number of Chromebooks, what we expect will be happening with our families, the one-to-one potentially, and, and internet access hopefully for families as much as we can help them?
Madam Superintendent?
Yes, through the chair. So, our Chromebooks that we had ordered are gonna be delayed till mid-October. However, our IT department did a survey of everything that we currently have, and we are confident that every student will be able to get a Chromebook. So they will be distributed by principals and their staff at individual schools. For example, the principal of Sullivan Middle is already starting distribution next week. So, schools will be contacting their families, setting up appointments for them to come in and get their Chromebooks. They will also be asking if there is connectivity, whether or not you need a hotspot, and we will also be distributing the hotspot. So we will have connectivity for everybody, and we will also have a Chromebook so that every single student in Worcester Public Schools has their own Chromebook.
And I think we should be as creative as we can. Parents come into the schools is one thing, but also to look at other means of distribution, community groups or our teachers, however we can do this, let's just make sure that we are getting those Chromebooks to the families and they have them. As the second question, I don't even know if we can do this, but I do worry about families and children like me not knowing how to use some of the technology. And they may have the Chromebook, but they don't really know how to use it. And are we able to provide some professional development support, if you would, through our IT folks for the families that need it in multiple languages so they can help their child get onto the Chromebook and access the information? I just think it's, I want to be able to make sure as much as we can that people know how to access the remote classrooms and the remote learning.
Yes, so Sarah Keriasis is launching a Caregivers Academy, and that is webinars and videos that are in different languages, and they're, it's there to support families. Also, there's a helpline that you can also call during the day where there's a person that responds.
Maureen, do we have some interfaith groups and other people who are volunteering to work with us?
Yes, I don't know, I know Sam is managing this, but I don't know.
She is? Okay.
She might be able to answer. Oh, she can't. This she is.
Yep, yep. Yes, so we have a team of people working on both teachers and coaches and principals, family members, and then a lot of community groups that are giving feedback periodically for this Caregivers Academy. It's launching off a website, and it's gonna be fully translated, the videos and all the instructions and everything, into seven languages. It's being translated right now. And there's going to be a kickoff meeting. I'll have to look at the date. I think it's in two weeks with a lot of community groups. We've also been invited to some community groups. There'll be ongoing webinars in multiple languages, and so there's a, we are working with the community groups both to inform what's going in to the tutorials and the website and the webinars, so it's streamlined and really helpful to families. And then also to help us disseminate the information to families in multiple languages through interfaith groups, through community groups.
Again, this is a challenge, but it's also an opportunity. And I think, you know, we've talked about this community coming together, people being interested in helping. The Worcester Together Fund has been tremendous, and not just the money, but it's kind of the networking that's there. We should be as creative as we can with our community development groups, with our organizations, Boys and Girls Club, that, that they know what we're trying to do and that they can talk to all of their families and help them access the information, because it's a chance for everyone to rally around our students, to make sure that they don't fall behind with the remote learning or... And then finally, I guess, you know, there are still many details to be worked out. I think the decision tonight is the right one, to go with remote learning for that first quarter, and then to really prepare our, our teachers and our families for this. I think Mr. Bonfido mentioned the concern that I have about nutrition, and let's make sure that we can, we did a lot of great work this summertime, but let's try and even ramp it up more with our community groups again, our community location, to get, get the food out there. And I agree with the mayor that we have to look at our benchmarks and achievements to make sure that our students are making progress, and if not, we've got to tweak that whole, the whole plan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jack. Sorry for interfering there, but.
Oh, no.
Madam, Jack, Mr. Foley just brought up a good point, Maureen. You spoke to it this morning about nutrition and feeding students. Can you maybe give us a quick review of that?
Yeah, so our plan is that every, even though we don't have students in schools, and teachers can decide if they want to come into their classrooms or not, we're still gonna open our schools as hubs for the food. So there'll be doors that will be marked at each school, and families can go in and receive prepackaged breakfast and lunch. Our also, Donna Lombardi, who is our excellent nutrition director, is also exploring how we're gonna be doing the distribution in the community. So one of the ideas was that, you know, the bus stops, where the bus stops are very close to students' homes, and that they would be able to pick up the food at the bus stop. And then if there is a family that actually has COVID and they're in need of food, there's some home deliveries in partnership with the YMCA on Main Street.
Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent. I thought Mr. Foley said it right, too, when he said, you know, our front line is the principals and the teachers, but surely it's gonna be a community effort for the success.
Yes.
And I think that's, that needs to be emphasized again. Mrs. Clancy, did you want to speak? I thought you had your hand up.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
So I, I also, you know, I just want to thank the administration, the teachers and the educators who've been part of this plan. I know that this has been tremendous work. I know that, you know, not many people got to really have a summer break. But I do want to just point out that as a parent who works full-time, that I want our parents to understand that I get it. I know a lot of us on the committee understand it's not gonna be easy for us. So I do, as we keep, you know, looking at the plans and working out the fine details, I want us to try to think about how we can record lessons, because I know that we're gonna be relying on older siblings to be watching younger siblings, and I, I understand a fully with the synchronous lessons. But if we can, you know, try to implement a way to record lessons so that parents can access that with their students later on in the evening, will be beneficial for us working parents. And I want the teachers to know that we heard you, and I hope that this decision makes, helps in making the incredible task going forward a little bit easier for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Clancy. Ms. Biancaria?
Thank you. First of all, I certainly want to commend administration. We have spent not only evenings but early mornings Zoom calls and messages and so on. Tremendous amount of communication and tremendous amount of excellent work by the administration that at times I doubted even got any sleep during these hot summer days. I look forward to our decision this evening, and I certainly commend everyone for their efforts. I know there was EAW, our teachers, our administration, our community, for all of us to get to a point where we are looking at what is best for our students and our community to keep everyone safe. I certainly feel as though we are in a comfortable area now of saying that students will have their Chromebooks and will be moving in the right direction to ensure that everyone will get their Chromebooks, and we have classes for them to help them along, to give them the support that hopefully will help them with their kids. And I'm interested on the progress we make with our students in the first quarter. I think that will tell us a great deal. And it's always something in process. And we're always in process, looking for the shining light and the star in this. And I think the star is our community. We have truly pulled together. We have looked at this. We've discussed it. And there are times that we may not always agree, however, we agreed to disagree. So I think we've done a lot of work to get to this point. And I want to say thank you to everyone who worked so hard to get here. I look forward to taking the vote tonight. I also think that when we talk about our finances, that's very serious business. We're not talking about small dollars here. We're talking about large dollars, millions of dollars. I want to thank the city for stepping up to help us out with this, and the city manager and the mayor. Those are not easy decisions, and we're also looking at monies that we thought we were going to get as a school district, and we probably are not going to be getting. So we have some real tough decisions. But if we move forward in the manner that we've been working for the last few months, then I think we are on the road to what we would consider tough times, but successful tough times. We're gonna do the best that we can. So, tonight we take our vote. I hope people, whether they're in the front lines, parents, younger kids, have your ears open and know what the vote means and what you'll be doing in September. And if you have questions, start asking them. And I say start because we've discussed so much that I'm sure that there are times, that there are situations where the thought is, should I ask this? Should I not ask this? Well, over the next few weeks is the time to get those questions out there. So, I think we've looked at what we need to do for September. I think once we review the progress, we'll be able to make some tweaks. We'll, we'll be able to see what works, take a look at what other districts are doing. But I have great faith in, in us moving forward. And I also believe that, as I have said before, we are a community that other towns and cities are looking at, and we will be successful. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Biancaria. Ms. McCullough, you're up next.
Thank you so much. And much of what my colleagues have said are many of the points that I was going to touch on. But again, I would like to say thank you to the administration for all of the hard work that went into this planning. I mean, I think we know it was a pretty lofty tasks ahead of you to come up with these plans, and I do believe we're making the right choice with the remote learning and also the option of giving our staff the option to go into buildings to do their teaching remotely. I appreciate, I, the comments about nutrition and as well as the technology, I think it is very important that we make sure that we get that technology out to students, and that it's great to hear that we have plans in place to work with families and parents who are going to be supporting their students for those webinars and lessons to help families. To Ms. Clancy's point, you know, I do want us to be looking at that with how we can help working families in terms of those that aren't maybe able to provide support during the day, synchronous, when we're doing the synchronous learning for students. I do believe that the synchronous learning is our most important aspect of this plan right now, and it's very important that we do that, but that we make sure that we are providing supports for those families that may not be able to be there for their child during the day, and provide those supports not only from us, but again, working with the community and how we can build or bridge those gaps that we're going to face with that. And, you know, Mr. Foley mentioned Worcester Together, and not just the financial component that Worcester Together is providing, but bringing those community groups together and really building upon those relationships with the faith groups and community groups with how we can provide those additional supports. So again, I would like to thank everyone for the work that has gone into this. I do look forward to hearing more of the actual minutia of the plans as we go forward, and really appreciate all the hard work that was done on this. And thank you to our teachers for working with this on, as well.
Thank you, Ms. McCullough, and I know that I've had to... And I know that I've had discussions with Tim Godwin and he's very interested in helping out, making sure when it comes to daycare. The Boys and Girls Club is doing a great job there to him and why. So the community is already stepping up. We just have to figure it out over the next few weeks. But I think we, is that every, Ms. Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I read the plan. I have read her a lot, so fair warning. I, I do want to echo those who have said that, that the past several weeks have been very productive, that I've been very impressed and I very much appreciate the way in which the administration has worked with the committee on this. I, I know of communities in which the committee essentially walked in knowing nothing of the plan and had it revealed at a meeting and they were supposed to vote at the spot. I think we're seeing some outflow of that now. And I know that that has not been the case here and I very much appreciate that. That has clearly come from the administration and I appreciate the, the change in that. I do want to note, as some of my colleagues have, that this term, between the combination of the Student Opportunity Act hearings and the pandemic, that one thing that this committee has done a lot of is listen to the public, which I think is a very healthy thing for a public body to be spending time doing. And while those two things happening in the same year are in no way that I can think of otherwise positive, I think that they actually have been very good for this committee. So I think that that's actually really useful. I do think it's incumbent on, at least me as a local elected official, not to go into this and vote without observing in the strongest possible terms that we've been let down by every single other branch of government. We could talk at length and certainly people have about what an absolute disaster the federal government has been on, on this. I don't think I need to give a lot of time and space here, but local government stepped up, people stepped up, we closed the schools, people stayed home, people wore masks and we had people kicking the ball down the road. We've got a federal administration that refuses to take this seriously, that pushed it off and pushed it off and pushed it off and hasn't done anything. We need massive testing. We did massive tracing. We need support for our schools and families. And Senate adjourned an hour ago and they're not back until after Labor Day. So the coronavirus continues to just increase and multiply and kill people and we've got nothing from the Fed. And I say that not meaning anything against our own delegation who have been on the front lines of every battle we've needed them to be. But when it comes to the leadership in Washington in general, has been no help. And thus, we're put in an impossible position. I mean, you're talking about us essentially needing to cobble together local daycares. We've got parents who are trying to figure out how they're going to be able to do all of what they're going to be able to do. And I honestly, I mean, the superintendent has said, we don't have an answer for that because that's actually honestly outside of our purview, but it's also outside of our resources and everything else. And I think it's great that Worcester is going to step up, but we should also, I think, honestly recognize that this is above and beyond us and it, it's supposed to be. We're supposed to actually be getting federal help here and we're not. I also think that we have not, or that rather, not enough has been said about the ways in which the state has let us down. While the state has done better in dealing with the virus, that's really a sliding scale. And when it comes to schools, we've never recovered from March where every single superintendent in the Commonwealth had canceled school before the governor stepped forward and said, oh yeah, we'll do that. And here we are, it's August and we're once again left to our own devices. It was like deja vu all over again. Two days before the plans are due, suddenly we've got this map that's supposed to tell us whether or not we can go back into schools. That's not helpful. That's not useful. That's, that's not even Monday morning quarterbacking. What that's doing is there have been a whole bunch of communities across the state that have already made their plans, had already made their decisions, just like us, on all kinds of metrics. They've done their HVAC, they've done their buildings, they knew their people, they knew their local levels, they knew where their teachers were coming from. The governor comes out with a map and all of a sudden they've got parents up in arms saying, oh wait, but we're actually a community that doesn't have any color on it. Really? This is not actually the kind of help that we need. So, Mr. Chair, I really think that if you could possibly bring some of that fire that you brought to your Spectrum letter to a letter to the delegation about the numerous ways, and I'm sure the superintendent would be happy to fill you in further, that honestly, the department has just not only let us at sea, but in many cases gone out to kind of sink us. I don't have any idea what's going on there. It's entirely the executive branch. I don't know if it's the governor. I don't know if it's the Executive Office of Education. I don't know if it's the commissioner. But honestly, the, the level of help that we've been getting there has been everything but helpful. And I think that we need to really say that because that, that is something that we really needed assistance there. There was, as, as was said earlier, we, we actually needed parameters and we needed them in a timely fashion and we needed these kinds of things. And we're not getting it at all. And there's useful things they could be doing and they're not doing those. I would actually make a formal motion, though, because something that we are absolutely missing that we cannot do, I would ask that we, as a committee, call for ongoing, easily accessible, free testing with a quick turnaround, operating across the state before any district brings any students into session. Because while we are not bringing people into buildings, there are lots of districts that are. And I think that Worcester needs to stand up and say that something that we cannot do on our own is actually have that level of testing. And we know from country after country after country that one of the things that has been done that actually makes things run successfully is actually having that level of testing and contact tracing. So I would ask, Mr. Chair, that we formally request that that be done and that we also, moreover, invite other committees to do us, to join us in that call. In terms of the plan itself, I want to say that there was some language in here that I actually thought was, was quite good and that I wondered through the chairs of the superintendent. Clearly, there are, there's sort of an outline, right, with headlines of things that you need to fill in. Are there requirements in terms of how the letter comes together? And I, I don't want to do heavy editing here, but I had a couple of suggestions in terms of, since this is the message to our families.
Madam Superintendent?
So you're talking about maybe my letter at the beginning of it?
Right, the opening letter, yes.
Nope, we could do it any way that we want to. So we have suggestions.
So the reason that I ask the question is we've got a couple of things in some of the other sections that I think if we, if we start that as a theme, and I, I know that we're eager to get this off, too, but I think that there's also some, some useful things here. The section on page 32, which is part of the student support section, where it says, "The Worcester Public Schools will focus on fostering community and relationships throughout the day with three overarching principles: parity and interdependence of physical and emotional safety, equity and racial justice, and collective care." It struck me that if that is our actual intent, to state that somewhere upfront and actually then make that a theme that we're moving through would be, first of all, a valuable message to the community, but also would be a good statement of purpose on our part to say that in terms of what is it that we're actually trying to do here? Yes, we absolutely are attempting to ensure, you know, solid academics for children, but we also are really concerned about their well-being in a number of different parameters. So I, I'm not going to make that as a motion, but I would suggest that in terms of language that we should be leading with, since it is in there, and I think that that's valuable. Are we going to, at some point through the chair of the administration, be hearing more about the Parable Project and what they're doing for us?
Yes, we could actually do a presentation on that.
Okay, and I mean. Okay, and I mean, maybe it's incorporated, maybe it's better incorporated in as the chair is, as Mr., you were saying, Mr. Mayor, that we're going to get periodic updates wherever it is that that best flows. But I guess my only question on sort of the, the planning kind of timeline thing, we say on page three and then it's obviously through the document that we talk about a shift happening after first quarter or in November. Mr. Allen just mentioned December. I understand we're sort of setting parameters and timelines and so forth. I do wonder if we should have language in here that says something about it being November at the earliest or something of that nature, mostly because I think it's important for us not to, not to overpromise, to, to make sure that we're really being honest with the community of, you know, we understand that the quarter ends here. Sometimes physical plant work isn't quite that neat. That would be the earliest at which a change would happen, but it may not actually happen in mid-November. I don't know what your thoughts on that are through the chair.
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, so for Group C, our hope was that if, so right now, we're, we are notifying parents by phone for those students that are going to be in Group C. So our idea was then to see where the largest number of students went to school and focus that building, those buildings on being the ones that get completed first. So there is a possibility that those students wouldn't be able to go back. We would do a transition back to school for Group C in those buildings that we were able to prioritize and actually have that done. So, and the same thing, you know, if we're going to do the hybrid learning, the same thing would be based on what buildings that we got done, that we would then start that movement in. So in the plan, that's why I had wrote after first quarter, because I knew, rather than, I didn't want to put a month in, but after first quarter. But our hope is, because we're still very concerned for those Group C students, that we could get to complete some schools by that November deadline and actually be able to move programs into those schools.
Okay. If, if the intent isn't to say November, I think there's probably a couple of places where it may say November. So you might, may, may want to just have some, some, a new eyes, as you and I both were saying. Look at, look at it again to see if it does say November anywhere. On page five, we have this list of, of information that was gathered. Did we draw in any way on the, the various health matrices of the city? The various kinds of, are we used, is, has that been used here? And then I guess I would ask going forward, to what degree we're, we're using it? Through the chair.
So through the chair, we, well, we most recently used the fact that we're a yellow district now, right? So that actually entered into my decision, not only with the latest information that we gathered about the ventilation system, but also the increase from Worcester from a green to a yellow was substantial in us going forward with our thoughts about 100% remote and also that decision for faculty to be able to choose if they wanted to come in or not. So those were the, that was the, we, we watched the numbers. So yes, we do consider that in this plan. I, I, we could add that actually as another bullet, that we also looking at the metrics that the city uses to watch the increase in the virus.
Thank you. Yeah, and, and part of the reason I raise it, Mr. Chair, you obviously would know this better than I because of the city side, being the one that's doing the work on this. There's a number of districts that have actually put together fairly sophisticated matrices that essentially look at a number of different things in terms of the virus and health as part of the decision-making process of moving towards having anyone back in buildings. And I don't have a good sense of, of what the Board of Health and what the Department of Health have set up in that way. But I was going to suggest that part of our conversation should not only be about the HVAC systems. And I don't know if this is us having a joint meeting with the Board of Health or what the best way of having that conversation is. But it does seem clear to me that the other piece of this is our buildings can be as fantastic as possible. It may still come to a point where we don't, don't want to have groups of people in them, depending on what's happening in the community. And I, I'm, I'm not exactly sure, Mr. Chair, city side, who it is that is the best person to be having that sort of a community development conversation with. But I would ask that, that we make that part of our conversation here. I'm seeing some valuable work in other places across the state on that.
Sure, we can try to look at that. I know the superintendent meets with the medical community every Wednesday each week. Maybe at the next meeting, superintendent, maybe you could talk to Dr. Hirsch about putting some parameters together, some matrices and how the, when, why or why not we should not bring people back into the schools?
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Put it down. We'll do them all together as one motion.
Sure, thank you. So the, I echo the, the statements that my colleagues have made earlier about not so much synchronous learning, although I actually have an issue there, too. But I actually had a question for Dr. Freel. I know that there's been a, essentially pandemic emergency policy that's come out. Have we received that and is that on, is that on like our next agenda?
We have not received it.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make sure that that goes through because part of what it does is it sort of spells out, there's a whole bunch of policies that obviously we need, that the school committee needs to go look at that says, okay, so there's a bunch of stuff that we're not doing that we need to look at and figure out how it's going to work this year. One of them is attendance. And for the obvious reason that we're not going to have kids actually physically sitting in a building and can put a check next to their name because their body's there. And one of the concerns that's been raised, not only here, but in other places across the state that I know some districts have been having a conversation with the department about, has been the notion that making attendance dependent on whether or not your internet and electricity work is a problem. Like you, I, I, as some of you know, I was on a school committee meeting two weeks ago. Electricity went out in my house and I was off the meeting. And I, you know, I don't, if Dr. Freel was quick enough, she'd probably put it in the minutes. I was marked absent because my electricity went out. That's, that's a problem if you're in school. So we need to create some fashion for us to have a way for dealing with that. And it's not only going to be that, but that's the one that came to mind because this is Worcester and we have ice storms and hurricanes and, you know, all kinds of other stuff. So I'm not objecting in general to the notion that we need to be having kids see teachers and vice versa. But I do think that there needs to be essentially, and if this, if this doesn't happen, the next thing that happens is this, and that still can count. And I think that that, I mean, that's a policy decision. Obviously, we can have that conversation at whatever level we need to, if we do it as a full committee or a subcommittee. But I do want to make sure that we're clear that we are dependent on utilities that we don't control to a degree that we usually aren't. I mean, we can complain about, you know, whether or not the sand trucks hit a particular hill and the buses didn't get through and, all right, that's an armored city government, so that we've got some pull there. But if ever Source loses something or Spectrum, you know, gets hit on one side of the city, we've just lost a whole bunch of kids and there's nothing we can do about it. So I, I, I don't, we don't need to have that conversation tonight. I do think, though, we need to have that conversation as a committee because it's going to happen. I mean, we're supposed, of course, because it's 2000, we're supposed to have one of the most worst hurricane seasons on record. So you know bound and determined it's probably going to happen in early September. Does the, um, the question I had. Yeah, so to what degree through the chair of the administration, would you say that there's flexibility within the schedule for teachers to be doing things like scheduling movement breaks? Because that was one of the concerns that I had in looking at it, is that we have a few breaks sort of in there, but we don't necessarily have that written in.
Madam Superintendent?
Chair, so there are times when it says that, so the teacher is teaching synchronously and then they're giving students independent work to do and that's so that teachers can work with small groups. But during that time, that'll be very easy, right, to have that happen. At least scheduled luncheon. So there'll be opportunities for teachers to say, okay, let's all stand up, let's, you know, move around, right? They're definitely, we, we don't have them sitting racking in front of a computer the whole time. There is time in the Air Force and independent work and there are breaks.
Okay, I think that, again, in terms of our communication with families, let's make sure that we're really upfront about the fact that this is the block, but no one on our end is saying this means your kid's going to be in front of a computer for five hours, that if your kid gets up and uses the bathroom, your kid gets up and gets a breath of, like, that's accepted as part of the day, that's supposed to be happening. I think in particular, families may be worried about that. In, on page 24, in transportation. I know that Desi has beaten the word guidance, you know, into our heads. It strikes me that we're not actually laying out guidance there, though, that we're create, that, and that's not a policy either. That's how things, that's how something happens. I think that's a procedure, but that wasn't an edit. That seems like a change in, in meaning. So I didn't, through the chair of the administration, am I correct? Essentially, we're saying this is what's going to happen, not, these are helpful suggestions that we have.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I can answer that question. I think, through the chair, I think you're right. I think we're taking the guidance and we're adopting it as procedure for the district.
Okay. And I just, I don't want us to get into some sort of a quibble with a family that says, oh, but you said that was guidance. And we said, no, actually, like, we. that says, oh, but you said that was guidance. And we said, no, actually, like, we meant it. I can see that happening because I know a lot of people read this plan.
How are we doing?
Thank you. So the 20, 28 and following, I know comes from the state. This is why I actually raised the question around tracking because we actually, if you start figuring out 14 days of isolation, we're going to have kids who are truant in no time flat. We're going to have teachers who are out of sick days in no time flat. And that's, again, that's not our fault. But if we don't have easily accessible testing and so forth, that's a problem. Um, is there a way for us to, in our early communication to families, also make it clear the best way to reach people and kind of who's who in reaching people? I don't, I will, I still to this day, I've had, you know, children in different schools, obviously am heavily involved. When I'm told something like contact the X, I frequently don't know how to do that. And my answer is to call the main office. But if no one's in the main office, that's not possible. Can we make sure that we're really very clear and upfront to our families as to, you know, here are the email addresses, here are the cell phone, like whatever it is that we're going to do through the chair, so that that's early on?
Mr. Mayor, can I answer that question, please?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Pizzella here. In regards to any, our communication plan is going to entail that all principals develop ongoing communication in regards to educating families on symptoms of COVID-19 and also what they should be aware of in regards to their children's health. What is happening from there is that we will subsequently offer very often connect ed messages to families and give them updates as the COVID-19 is shifting every day, as you know. I want to get back to testing. We are developing a strong, we have been for some time now with the Department of Public Health, the City of Worcester's Emergency Management System. And now we're going forward and developing a strong collaborative with UMass Memorial Healthcare and AIDS Project Worcester and MassDPH in providing comprehensive free COVID-19 testing in the City of Worcester. The governor has given until September 12th funding for this free testing. So what we are doing is that, for instance, up at Worcester Tech, we are now working on a plan where free testing will be available to the community, including our families and our staff for over 15 working days. And so that's how we're going to be getting with the message is to get people tested, the ages from two to adulthood. And so we are going to be encouraging families that if they are interested, that they can be tested along with their children. And we are also going to have a special day, once we work this out, to possibly all of our staff in the Worcester Public Schools. So that is the first step.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Pizzella, could you tell me what the turnaround time is for those tests, please?
AIDS Project Worcester has already been in one of our schools at Worcester Arts Magnet. UMass Memorial Healthcare was up at Worcester Tech providing free testing last Monday to the community, in particular, certain areas of the community where there's a high risk for COVID-19. All the data is saying that there is cause for concern.
Yeah. Mr. Pizzella, what I'm asking is, is how long does it take for the test to come back?
The test usually takes anywhere from two to three days.
Okay. Because that, that is how long they, they need to, they, they actually need to be quarantining themselves. So that's actually going to become part of the problem. I would also observe, while I understand that we're, why we're doing it at Worcester Tech, that Worcester Tech is actually not particularly very easily accessible to families that don't have cars. But that actually was not the, your communication. I'm glad that that is actually something that we're doing. I'm glad that we're going to be keeping families updated. What I'm asking for is to make sure that we are giving families information on how they can then contact their schools because that's something that is difficult to do. I ran into it myself earlier this year when I looked at the website and realized the only reason that I could get in touch with someone is because I'm actually in the email system and could find someone's name.
Mr. Novak, how you doing? You could be on your phone.
I've got about two more things.
Okay. Hang on for a second. Waring?
Yes.
Yeah. Through the chair, I also want to say that one of our subcommittees, Ranata Mara Mahoney's group was, that came actually out of that, that, it's those exact questions about a contact list and a resource list also, not just a contact for Worcester Public Schools, a resource list. So that's actually coming out of that committee and we'll be sharing that to all families. So I just wanted to say that. And then can I just say one more thing about the, the testing is that the instant test has been ordered by Family Health so that you're going to be able to get, you know, an instant answer. And so we are meeting to talk about opening clinic at three of our sites, which is going to be Woodland, God, Woodland and Goddard. I'm trying to think what the third site is, and Elm Park, because they have an outside entrance so that our families will be able to go there not only for the instant COVID test, but also for the flu shot. So we're also working with Dr. Maddy Castillo on also providing that too. So we are, you know, starting to get into, can we get our staff tested for free, as Mr. Pizzella said, and also how can we get them to get that flu shot? So we are working on both of those.
And I know that.
And Mr. Larry, UMass is, this free testing tomorrow, they're going to schedule a couple more free weeks of testing. And when that comes out, maybe we also put it on the Worcester Public School website or our Facebook pages to let people know that testing is available and that there's testing tomorrow that's free also. So I think it's a day turnaround too, so.
Right. And I mean, it's, the reason I actually asked the question and asked for the motion is because we know, I know Mr. Pizzella had told us at our last meeting that we were having this testing that's going on until, you know, until mid-September. But mid-September is also when we come back to school, which then we need, we need stuff that happens after that. I also know that several of us are willing to go very publicly get a flu shot and put it on social media for, for what that's worth. So we may want to make that a thing too, Mr. Chair. The, to your point, Mr. Chair, about there being offers of family, of, from Worcester Interfaith and other groups of, of getting families up and online. I think once you've got them online, the webinars, as have been described, are useful. But if you have families that are still struggling with the, how do we make sure the computer is charged? Where is the on button? How do you navigate? That sometimes takes person-to-person stuff. And so I'd like to see us actually tapping into that, that personal resource. I had a question from a student asking how after-school stuff will work. Are we going to, I know that a number of them have Google classrooms that are actually set up. Is that something that we're going to essentially be encouraging of they can use Google Meet or use whatever in order to be able to be getting together through the chair?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, we really haven't discussed that part yet. What we have discussed, however, is the cultural institutions being able to offer classes for our students online every day after school and depending upon the cultural institution, and also on for those Friday independent project. So we are going to be offering that and we should be hearing within 72 hours. The, the word is that there are going to be some sports that may be offered, right? And within 72 hours, we will be getting a notification of what sports those will be.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Like, because that state guidance had come out, I know MIA is meeting. Thank you. I, I know that that's of concern to a number of our, our students, naturally, not surprisingly. The, I, I was very encouraged of the notice in a couple of different places about the fact that cameras can be off. I think that that's a really important point for us to be making, that essentially we now are guests in our students' homes, to some degree uninvited guests. And we should be really cognizant of what that means. Our children live in lots of different places and the degree to which they may want to share that visibly with us may vary. I think that we need to really stress that to our teachers, that this is not, we lose some control in these situations. And I know that as a former teacher, that's something that can be very, very uncomfortable. But they are sitting in their own houses and that is something that we need to be thoughtful about. So I just wanted, I went to praise that because I think that's actually a really, really important thing for us to have in this document, in that context. In that though, that was actually the same section which was coming off of what I believe was the remote learning agreement we had from the spring, which is starts on page 52. The last line of that says, still says that families can request an alternative packet. And I suspect that that probably isn't something we're doing anymore. But I wanted to check through the chair.
Madam Superintendent?
So actually, you do really great, Tracy. There are so many, a few things that, that I've read that so many times. So actually, we do, we, we do, we're not going to offer an alternative learning packet as we were, you know, clearly told and the research shows those aren't effective. And so, and also with COVID, the, any type of paper packet, we're trying to disguise, right? So that's something that I really need to make off this. Thank you.
So, yeah, and so, thank you. And so I actually was curious because I think that then goes back to the earlier point, which is that if there are families who are uncomfortable with, you know, showing off where they live, then we've already now assured them that that's something that's under their control. And that is all I had, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
You sure?
I'm very sure.
Okay. We got, we got, so in the form of a motion, asking about free testing for families ongoing after we start school for teachers and families. We also have an order on changing the letter up front to take into effect was on page 32 about, whatever it was on page 32 there. But so put that on too, as far as amendment. Also looking at matrix, also addressing absenteeism and electricity goes out. And that'll be the new snow day, I guess. But so we will, so in the form of, form of motion, send those to the superintendent. Ms. Bean-Carrier? You're on mute, Diana.
Sorry about that. On the testing, what, what is the exact motion for the testing? Because I have some concerns with that. It seemed that it went on to what other communities were going to do and so on. And so I need to know exactly what, what is the motion for the testing piece?
I will, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Novak?
Request the state make available ongoing, easily accessible, free testing with a quick turnaround operating across the state before any districts bring students back into session.
Well, we can take a report. I'm not sure about bringing students back into session.
Is it possible?
Into session just means it's happening.
What does that mean? I'm sorry.
Well, I figured we couldn't say it back into buildings or back into classes because that's happening in different places across the state. Essentially, what I wanted to do was make sure that this was something that was up and running before we actually had any collection of people getting together, us or anyone else.
Yeah. I'm not ready to make that decision to, at this point, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
You're not willing to ask for it?
I'm willing to ask for it. Most definitely.
That's what it says. Request the state. Request the state.
We prioritize Worcester? I have no problem.
Don't we always prioritize Worcester?
I hope so. I get it.
Request the state is the, is the wording.
To do it. Doesn't mean I'm not going to bring kids back. Okay. So it's still bring, depending what happens, Diana, the, I think the main is to request the state to do this. But at the same time, I think if they don't do it, I think it's going to be a decision we'll have to make at that particular moment in time.
Oh, right. No, I'm not saying that means that we don't bring kids back in.
Okay. That's what Diana's question was.
No, I'm sorry.
Well, no, no. My, my question is, is a part of it that ends with, within the state. So we're not looking at Worcester, we, or I.
It's going to be a state thing.
You know, you know what? I'll make this simple. Could we vote on the motion separately then?
Okay. So we'll take that one out.
I'm happy to explain why though. Because we have people who live.
This isn't a big deal.
Right. We have people who live all over the place. So we need it accessible to our staff. Because we need it accessible to our staff, right? Because they don't all live in the city.
Yep. Okay. So what we'll do is take the other motions collectively as one will keep this one off at the moment and roll call.
Ms. Bean-Carrier?
And this is on all of them with the exception of that one, correct, ma'am?
That's correct.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Montfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mia Petty?
Yes. Mr. Novak wants to stake the motion one more time so people have it in front of you. So.
Sure. Request the state make available ongoing, easily accessible, free testing with quick turnaround operating across the state before any district brings students back into session.
Okay. So you're not saying not to bring students back in the session, you're asking the state to do this?
I'm giving them a deadline.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Roll call.
Ms. Bean-Carrier?
No.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Montfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mia Petty?
Yes. Okay. So again, I just want to thank everyone for, you know, I want to thank the school committee too, for participating and being very helpful to the administration. Again, thank superintendent and her team. So we'll open it up before we take a vote on the plan. After we take the vote, also take a vote to Senate to finance for a combo meeting of the city council subcommittee. But so who's going to lead us on the opening up? Is that Bob?
I am.
Who's that?
It's Sarah.
Hi, Sarah. How you doing?
Hi. So I'm going to remind everyone that if you don't have the latest version of Zoom, that we will ask you to upgrade and then come back and raise your hand again. So I'm going to go down the list and another reminder to state your name and your city of residence. So the first one is Tina. Tina Mansfield.
Looks like we have like, looks like we have like four people.
Yeah, there's only four right now. Yep. Tina Mansfield, please unmute yourself.
Hi, Tina Mansfield. I work for Transportation. I also live in Spencer. So my question is, if this passes that we don't go back to school until November, does that also mean the diocese school in the collaborative schools? Because we're being told in Transportation that we're going to be transporting them.
That's my understanding. Madam Superintendent, do you want to address that?
So they're going to be transporting the diocese schools, yes. And also the collaborative is also going back in person. So there will be, we will be transporting those groups. Can we ask Tina?
My other question is, are we going to be safe going back with the state or the city being in yellow? Because I'm scared for myself and my students that are going to be on these buses.
So my, my answer to that is that, you know, the students will be wearing masks on the bus and the spacing of the bus is, you know, one student on one end, the other on the other. So there's three feet facing on the buses, the ride buses, there'll be 24 students and eight on the small. And so the guidelines of course say that if we use appropriate EPEs and social distancing, that it should be safe.
Okay. Next, you have a question?
Carrie Saldo?
Carrie?
You need to unmute yourself. Yep, there you go.
Maybe we can go back to Carrie if that.
Okay.
With Kathy Holleran?
Yep. Kathy Holleran.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Oh, Carrie, yep.
Thank you very much. Carrie Saldo with WGBH News. Thank you for being patient. Technology is a beautiful thing. I had a question regarding superintendent at the beginning that all students will be given a Chromebook and also access to internet connectivity. Could you discuss the plans for getting those into the hands of students, both the internet connectivity and the Chromebook?
Yeah, but we, we all did that earlier. But madam, do you want to give a quick recap?
Yep. So through the chair, the teachers, the principals will be getting their staff together at the schools and be distributing the Chromebooks. Since we did that in the spring, we have, we have a very successful process already down. And they'll be contacting the families, getting appointments for them to come get the Chromebooks. As happened in the spring, if there were people that could not get to school to get the Chromebooks, the schools found ways to distribute them personally to the students. The same way, they'll get their hotspots as when they're called to the school to pick up the. The same way, they'll get their hotspots as when they're called to the school to pick up their Chromebook or it could be their iPad if it's for pre-K and K, they will also, if they need a hotspot, be able to get the hotspot. I, I think that's important to know that we're still also working with Spectrum. So that on what it would be, I think we'd also get some internet from Spectrum. So we're still working with Spectrum. We haven't given up on that either.
Carrie, you all set? Let's see, hang on.
Are you still here?
Sarah, yeah, you still, you're still there?
Yes, just one more quick follow-up. And the cost, just to be clear, so all students will have internet access at the beginning of school?
That's the plan, yes.
And do you have a rough cost for that? And then I'll step away. Thank you.
So we have 5,000 hotspots that we purchased. And the cost for us, so they are paid for until August 30th and then going from August 30th until school ends. The cost for those, just for those 5,000 hotspots is $750,000.
Right, but there's 16,000 families in the district. How does that serve everyone with the numbers that show in the broadband report that there is many thousands of people who don't have internet?
No, what was reported to us was 2,500 did not have connectivity. And so we ordered double the amount. And we will be also, when we call to ask them or to give them their appointment, to see when they could come in to get their Chromebook, we will also be asking that. So we feel as though that those 5,000 hotspots is, I'm gonna do what we need for our families. At least now at the initial, any worry that we've done. So if we need to purchase more, obviously, we'll, we'll come to the school committee to request that. But at this point, we purchased more than the number that told us that they need hotspots. So there are people that have internet in Worcester. So there are 17,000 families and 2,500 that said they needed hotspots. And so we distributed those, and even with that number, there were some that said they no longer needed them. So we actually haven't even used the 2,500 completely. And then we have the additional 2,500 that we're just holding in case people need them.
Okay, perfect. Okay, Carrie?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, who's up next? Sarah.
It is Kathy Halloran. Please unmute yourself.
Kathy? I think I could barely hear you, but oh, you're back muted again. There you go, you're unmuted.
Hello?
No, go ahead.
Kathy Halloran from Auburn, Massachusetts, also a second grade teacher at Jacob Hyatt Magnet School in the city and co-chair of the bargaining team. And on behalf of the thousands of educators in Worcester, I want to thank you all very, very much for your vote this evening and giving educators choice in being able to work either from school or at home. I know that there are thousands of people right now breathing a huge sigh of relief in a significant source of anxiety in preparation for returning to school. So I greatly appreciate your, your vote in that, in that regard.
Thank you, Kathy. Much appreciated. And okay, Sarah, the next person.
It is Deborah.
Deborah, you have to unmute yourself? Maybe hold on to Deborah, go on to the next person.
Okay. Let's see, Susan Sullivan, please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Susan Sullivan from Worcester, and I have a 10th grader at Worcester Tech. So first of all, I want to thank you guys because I do think a lot's gone into this. Second of all, my question is, is if this vote passes today, and we know things are changing daily, how set are we on the hybrid model that we're hoping for in November? If we have fewer number of students that, that want to go hybrid, and I apologize if this was answered earlier, I got caught up and wasn't able to get on right away. But if we have fewer number of students that want to go hybrid, is there the possibility of going more than one day? Or if the numbers, of course, if the numbers change and we feel that the distance is on the buses and all that stuff. So I guess how set and soon is this plan and what's our fluidity on changing things if we need to?
Yep. More, ma'am superintendent?
So the hybrid plan wouldn't change because of the bus, the bus transportation numbers that we have and how we're doing our four tiers. So we would continue with that one day of in-person learning and three remote, and then the fourth day independent learning.
Okay.
What would be fluid is if we go from remote, right, to hybrid is, is the fluidity of it. And when we would be able to safely do that.
Okay. Thank you. Go on to our next person. Deborah?
It's Deborah never unmuted herself.
Okay.
Can try again. Deborah, please unmute yourself.
You go on to the next person?
Yeah, the next one is Kathleen Bellaview. Kathleen Bellaview, please unmute yourself.
Okay, go on to the next person.
Okay. The next one is Betsy. Oh, she actually, this person needs to upgrade their Zoom and then we can let them speak.
Okay, go on to the next person.
Next one is Catherine Mulcahy. Please unmute yourself.
Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Catherine Mulcahy. I'm from Worcester.
Hi, I'm Catherine Mulcahy. I'm from Worcester.
Um, I just have a question. If teachers are given the option to work remotely from home or school, will they be required to report to their schools for the first 12 days still?
Through the chair? No, no. So the first 12 days will be, will be done remote.
Okay. Okay, go on to our next person.
Okay, the next one is Ji Yang. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, this is Ji Yang. I'm a parent. I have elementary school kid in Worcester District and also middle school students. I have two questions. One is, how would school plan to mandate mask? We heard some talks about older kids probably don't want to. I mean, what kind of discipline that the school plan to do for kids not willing to wear a mask? I mean, barred that they don't have medical situation that prevent them to do it safely. My second question is, both questions are all in the hybrid mode. My second question is, if there is confirmed the case in a school, how transparent to the district planning to let parents know? And that's my question. Thank you.
So ma'am superintendent, you want to address the PPE?
Right. So we're, we're not planning on any discipline for students that aren't gonna wear masks, right? We're gonna work with the student and the family in order for them to understand that is a requirement and it's there for a reason. So the, so it's not, it's not just, it's not a discipline challenge. We're not interested in having some people that be disciplined. And, you know, in my experience, kids step up the occasion. It's very few kids that, you know, would say that they're not going to wear a mask, but usually, or, you know, there's other situations, of course, we haven't had the mask situation before. But my experience is if you have a conversation with students, they understand the reason for it, that they'll wear that mask. And the second question, I could not hear very clearly at all.
I think I can answer that, superintendent.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so it's, it's in regards to notification, once the school finds out that someone is COVID-19 positive. We, we have a system in place that's developing to where every school will have a COVID-19 leader that will be responsible for the daily issues that take place in regards to COVID-19 issues. So if the school gets, if the respective school gets notified that someone is COVID-19 positive, student or staff, then there will be a notification letter sent to people that were in contact where they could have been exposed. And then we, the name will be turned over, if it already has, into the Department of Public Health, and they are officially in charge of doing contact tracing.
Okay, I think your question was more regards to transparency and letting people know. We're gonna have a protocol, let people know in the building if we have positive cases.
Yes, but, but we have to, by HIPAA laws, of course, but we will, we will at least let families know that there was someone in the building we are aware of that could be COVID-19 positive and that there's a process in place that we will ask families to do, like they might want to be tested, your child might want to be tested. And then, once again, if there's a COVID-19 positive person, the Department of Public Health in the city gets that information. And then they subsequently put a contact tracing process in place.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Next.
Yeah, I'm gonna try Deborah again because I lowered her hand, but it was raised again, so maybe they figured out the audio. So I'm gonna go to that. Deborah, please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Deborah Aspen, very masked, and I'm the art teacher at Flag and Roosevelt. My question had to do with art supplies specifically, since we are going to be teaching art remotely and there were issues back in the spring as to children not having the necessary supplies at home. Had there been any provisions made or plans in the works regarding distributing art supplies? And for that matter, any other materials that they may need for any other specialist topics?
Okay, ma'am superintendent, I know you addressed that this morning.
Yep, through the chair. We are gonna be meeting with principals. They're coming back on Monday. And that's the conversation that we'll be sharing with principals. We are, a conversation that we've had up to this point is that there would be bags of supplies, especially for elementary school students that they would pick up at the same time they picked up their Chromebook and that they would be distributed. And they'll also be in need throughout that month to also replenish some of the supplies. So that will be occurring. And it, and actually, Henry and Larry, in the shutdown in the spring, also put together some great supplies in bags that were distributed to any family. From, from DAB, we distributed them that was also interested. So we will be doing that again.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, next speaker?
Yep, Roseanne Fowler. Please unmute yourself.
Roseanne Fowler, I'm a resident of Worcester. My son will be starting kindergarten at Columbus Park, and I just have two questions about Columbus Park specifically. I know, how are we, how is the schools department deciding which schools to work on the HVAC first? Because I know Columbus Park is classified as a red.
Okay, ma'am. Mr. Allen, you want to hear that, superintendent?
That's good for Mr. Allen.
Okay, Mr. Allen?
So the current schedule is still being finalized, but all of our schools will be completed by December of 2020. But as the superintendent pointed out earlier, for those schools that we will bring back group C students in, we will prioritize those schools first, whatever schools that those get identified as. Those will be the first ones accomplished, so we can bring back group C students.
All set, Ms. Fowler? Okay, next speaker?
Deborah Bacon, please unmute yourself.
Okay, go on to the next speaker? Sarah?
Oh, I'm talking with my camera off. I'm Jen Colifloris.
Hi. Hello, my name is Jen Colifloris. I live in Worcester. My question is, how does this proposed plan address the large number of foster children in the city of Worcester? How has the district collaborated with DCF? Or is there a plan to identify these children who are already behind in their learning?
Ma'am superintendent?
So I, I think I'll, I'll answer also, but I think I'll ask Mara Mahoney to speak since she is the contact for DCF.
Maura? Wait for Maura to get on for a second.
Sarah, Mara's saying to let her in.
Maura, is she on a phone number? Because I don't see her in the attendee list.
So while waiting for Mara, I can say that Mara meets regularly with the supervisors for DCF. Last year, we decided meeting monthly with the, not only the area supervisor, supervisors, but also the mid-management as well. We talked, we were talking about sharing information more readily so that we could be greater partners on student success. So that is the same that would happen here. Our, some of the students that are in this group would be considered in our group C. And as we move forward with identifying those students and doing the programming, we would be contacting the DCF and also the foster families of those students.
But I don't see her or her phone number, so should we come back to that when she gets on?
Yes, I answered it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. The next one is Mark Dykes. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, all. Thank you for all your hard work. I know it's difficult, but I had two questions. Ms. Beninda, you had mentioned that the Chromebooks, I, I know you want to get Chromebooks in the hands of, of all students before school starts, but if all students don't have access to a Chromebook, will you implement a no-harm grading policy for first term?
So what would be, no, because what have, we are gonna have, everybody's gonna get a Chromebook. So in the first term would be a very long time to have a policy like that. So we would not say there's a no-harm policy. The commissioner has been very clear on this, that this is a regular school day for students and grades will be given. So we're not, we're not gonna be in that situation. Everybody's gonna get a Chromebook and everybody's gonna be, you know, attending our classes and getting a great education and getting grades.
Thank you. And the next question is, what is the plan for forums like this as the school year is ongoing so that all families can be up to date on status, on the status of in-person learning and updating?
I think the, yeah, I think the plan's gonna be, and we're gonna talk about what the school committee is. I'm thinking the Monday before the first Thursday of the month, that the school committee will meet and let the parents call in if they have any concerns, issues, and students. That sounds right. That's, we're gonna work that over the next few weeks. Because I think the more contact we have with the, the parents and the teachers, the better off we're gonna be.
Hey, Tracy White, please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm from Worcester. I have a question because nobody has talked about the support staff, the office staff, the nurses, guidance counselors. Are they also gonna be remote or choose to be remote if they wanted to?
Maura?
So the, the office staff, where the office staff, there's some job they cannot do remotely, will be, could be coming into the building. Will be, could be coming into the building. We haven't discussed about the office staff yet. We've just talked really about the teachers and the assistant principals. But there is going to be some office staff that will be going in. There's nobody else, as they are in right now, right? Our 52-week people are in our buildings right now, our custodians are in our buildings right now. They will need to report, because there are some work that we can't be done remotely. That has to be done depending upon certain people's particular jobs. Nurses would be remotely, school adjustment counselors, and school psychologists would be remotely. And they can choose whether they're going to do their job in their classroom or they're going to do it from home.
Okay.
Thank you.
All set, Ms. White? Okay, next one, Sarah?
The next one is Deana.
Hello?
Nicole, hey, Deana, what's your name and city of residence?
This is Deana Alvarez from Worcester, Mass. I have a son who is entering kindergarten, and I was just wondering about the kindergarten testing. How is that going to work for new kindergarteners coming in?
I think I'll defer to Ellen on that.
Hello, yes, no problem. We actually are meeting on that tomorrow to come up with a plan. We will, teachers will be reaching out to parents, and there will be a screening process. But what tools we'll be using are going to be decided tomorrow. But the plan will be, there will be a plan ahead of time, parents will be notified, and there will be a screening process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I guess we have one more person, Nicole and Katie?
Oh, hang on, let me just mute.
Go ahead, Sarah, I think I interfered in your.
Oh, yeah, we, sorry, we have like six more people, so.
Oh, we do? Okay.
Yep. The next one is Dana. I was just trying to get it right, because it was a Dana. Now this one's Dana. Oops, I think they just took their hand down. Okay, so the next one is Megan.
Hi, I'm Megan Harris. I'm from Worcester. And I'm the parent of an autistic child who's entering the first grade at Norback. She's in a full-time sale room. So my couple of questions is, I'm just wondering how, I'll formally find out if she is considered a group C child, as I haven't gotten that formal confirmation yet. And then just curious on how and when we might get more information on how services will be met that are on IEP. She gets like OT and, you know, she has a bunch of services. So I'm just wondering when we'll get more information about that.
Through the chair. So the students in group C have been called this week and next week. So you'll be getting a personal phone call regarding that. And they'll be asking you, are you interested after first quarter, when we do in-person work of sending your child to school? Or are you interested in your child staying remote? And the second part of that is the ETC in person. I'll be contacting you as well as the school with information about the services that you will receive for your child.
Okay, thank you. Next question?
Yep, Kirsten Lee Kamara. Please unmute yourself.
Okay, let's go to the next one. Go ahead, Christian. It's Kristen, sir.
Yeah, it looks like they're in twice, but not unmuted themselves, so we can go to the next person. Oh, here they go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kirsten Kamara. I'm from Worcester. I have a daughter that is on an IEP in the Worcester School System, and she's going into third grade. And I guess my question is, her IEP is a Wilson-based instruction. And I know last year it didn't work well from May to June with her IEP specialist, special ed teacher. Couldn't understand her over Zoom. So how are we going to do these remote IEP lessons for Wilsons, especially a speech-based learning disability through Zoom remotely?
Ma'am superintendent?
So we're going to have to do the best we can on it, right? Because that's the only method that we have right now. So if there's an issue with that, I really do think you should, you know, talk to the principal and talk to the teacher and talk to the special ed chair to find out if there are other things that we can be creative about that will make it effective.
Okay, next question?
Mary, please unmute yourself.
Hi, I was wondering, what is the plan regarding the instructional assistance?
Please state your full name and city of residence.
Mary Malley, Worcester, Massachusetts. What is the plan with the instructional assistance?
With the chair. So the plan with the instructional assistance is that they can work from home. And they'll be expected to, if you're a special ed instructional assistant, you'll be expected to work with the special ed teacher to provide service like you normally do to the special ed student. And so you'll be receiving a Chromebook. And you'll be expected to be in the classroom with your teacher and provide the services that you would do like you do during the normal school day.
Okay, next question?
Dana? Please unmute yourself.
Do we have Dana? No.
I thought we did, but.
Hi, my name is Dana.
What, please state your full name and city, and city of residence.
Hi, Dana Brown Dolan, I'm from Paxton. I was calling to wonder about the parents in our community that don't believe that the virus is real. How are we going to handle masks for them? And for exceptions, if we're, we have to allow exceptions, how are the teachers going to know about who is accepted from this and not? And how do we address that concern in real time?
Ma'am superintendent?
Through the chair. The exceptions, you know, the principals will know what the exceptions are, based on a doctor's note that would come talking about the exceptions for not wearing the masks. Parents, I'm assuming you're saying the parents that don't want to wear masks, therefore don't want the children to wear masks. Children from second grade on have to wear masks, and all children on buses have to receive them. So that's the message that we will continue to tell parents. And if they're saying that they're not going to be able to wear masks, if they need a doctor's note, they really have to. And just that very important part about that. So if a student has a note they cannot wear masks, then there has to be six feet between them and other students. So everybody else has three feet, but if there is a student with a doctor's note that says they cannot wear a mask, then there is six feet.
Okay, thank you. Next question?
Nicole and Katie? Oh, they actually need to update their Zoom, and they can come back in and raise their hand. The next one is Maria Kaplanis. Again, needs to update Zoom, can come back in. And then the next one, the last one is Jennifer Robeau.
Hello?
Jennifer, go ahead, Jennifer. What's your name and city of residence?
Jennifer Robo, I live in Worcester, Mass. I just have a quick question about the students who choose the remote learning. We've gotten a few phone calls that we need to make a decision this week, or by Monday, I believe. And so my question is, if we choose the 100% remote learning, and let's say we have, I have two students in the Goddard Scholars Academy, would they have the same teachers as they do in the classroom? Or will they be in a different, be taught by different teachers?
Ma'am superintendent, I know we're going, we're not, we're going remotely right into the first quarter, so you should know that. Then I think after that, it's going to be a slow process bringing people back. But ma'am superintendent, do you have anything?
So through the chair, I'm assuming that you're talking about the Goddard Scholars teachers at Sullivan Middle School. And so they would still have the Goddard Scholar teachers, right? Those are teachers assigned to Goddard Scholars. So whether they piped or remote or hybrid, they would still have the Goddard Scholar teachers. If you're talking about the high school, the Goddard Scholars only have certain teachers for grade nine. And then in grade 10, other students are able to join those classes. And then in 11 and 12, everybody's in AP together. So if you're talking about ninth grade, they would still have the Goddard Scholar teachers in ninth grade also.
Okay, Sarah, I think that brings us to the end.
Yes, you are correct.
Okay, so we're going to close that part of the program. I don't know if Mara Mahoney wants to address that. I know she's on, I see her there, so. Good question. Mara, you want to address that?
Sure, the issue of foster care, there's a couple of things we're still, I'm not sure if that was a foster parent or somebody just with questions in general. We're still doing the best interest determination meetings, which is that when children are initially entered into foster care, there's a conversation about whether they should stay in the district that, their district of origin where they were when they went into foster care, or if they move into the new district and enroll locally. It usually pertains to transportation only, but for this year, we've had conversations with DCF about that impacting which schools the children are registered, as far as, you know, if other districts are having school in real time. The main thing, though, is that we work very closely with DCF and with foster parents. As soon as we know that foster, that children are in foster care, we reach out to see if there's anything that they need, just to keep the communication. But any child who finished, who is in foster care from outside of Worcester, I mean, I'm sorry, if a Worcester child, a child can continue in Worcester if they moved out of the city into foster care, as long as they're returning to the same school, if it's in their best interest. And children who move into Worcester from outside of the district, again, if they continue with the same school, they can continue there. And that's something that we've been doing straight through from March, even though there's been no transportation, and something will continue.
Okay, so that brings us to the end of the comments. So I think the school committee is, I think, ready to vote on this and square the votes. And so their recommendation is to consider approval of the 2021 educational plan for the Worcester Public Schools. And so we will have a roll call.
Ms. Biancaria?
Okay, we'll wait for Diana for one second.
Yes.
Let's just wait for Diana.
Okay.
I think everybody wants to be recorded, so.
Want to do it and then come back?
Yeah, we can do that. Go ahead, yep.
Mrs. Clancy? Yes. Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfrido?
Absolutely.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. So if I just, I think we lost her there for a second.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we might mention that we might consider reconsideration tonight, because I believe the superintendent needs to submit this in the next 24 hours.
Sure. Okay, Diana, you're up for a vote. Yes on the plan? Okay, you're on mute.
Sorry about that, had an emergency. Yes.
Okay, so the motion is to suspend the rules, so we can take a reconsideration vote, roll call.
This is for the suspension. Ms. Biancaria? Yes. Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfrido?
John, you're on mute?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. The motion is for reconsideration, roll call.
Ms. Biancaria?
Well, this is Alice in Wonderland. This is a no.
Mrs. Clancy?
No.
Mr. Foley?
No.
Ms. McCullough?
No.
Mr. Monfrido?
No.
Ms. Novick?
No.
And Mayor Petty?
No. I should have done this also. Motion to send a report to Finance for a meeting with the City Council Subcommittee, roll call.
Ms. Biancaria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfrido?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, our next motion is to discuss strategy with respect to collective buying. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the buying position of the public body, the GSO, the CLIS, which I do, for coronavirus COVID-19-related issues, education associates from Worcester, units A and B, aides for the Physically Handicapped, monitors and drivers, instructional assistants, parent liaisons, tutors, and therapy assistants. And we will not be coming back to open session. Am I correct on that, Maureen?
That's true, and I just want to make sure that every, everybody on school committee knows that there's another Zoom that they were sent to get into executive session.
Ooh, challenging times, challenging.
Challenging times. I don't know where that is. So was it sent to us? It was on your same paper, Diana.
And Sue O'Neil sent, Sue O'Neil sent an email with Zoom. I can send it to you, Diana.
Okay.
All right.
Roll call.
Is that the webinar ID?
Okay, we'll come back to, so let's finish the roll call, and we'll come back to signing on. Roll call.
Ms. Biancaria? Yes. Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfrido?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, maybe, I know Sue O'Neil or Bob or Sarah can send each school committee member the link to their personal email address and whatever email address they use.
From Dr. O'Neil. I just sent it to Diana and John.
But I think it's a personal, is it a personal link?
Personal. It's the personal link.
So you can't send it to someone else?
I thought they could figure it out.
It works. Excuse me.
Sarah, go ahead.
It does, it does work. That link is not like the link that we used tonight earlier. This one is the waiting room. Everyone can use the same link. It's not a webinar. It's just a regular Zoom.
Oh, perfect. Okay, we're all set then. So you can just dial a number in and without the link. Okay, sounds good. So the motion is to go, I already took that motion, never mind. So again, I want to thank everybody, and I want to thank the public. I want to thank the parents participating and the teachers, and we'll get through this. We all have to step up to the plate and make sure our kids get well educated, so.
That's right.
Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you all.
Thank you.